Good evening, and welcome to the October 26th meeting of the Scarborough Playing Board. Will we all please rise for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Karen, you want to read the roll call, please?
Ms. Alglis?
Here.
Mr. Beale?
Here.
Mr. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Fellows?
Here.
Mr. DuPont?
Yep.
And Mr. Wood.
Okay, minutes of the October 5th, do I hear any comments or motion to approve? Any comments? All in favor?
Oh, I get to vote, yes.
You have a comment?
No, I just remember I was supposed to vote.
I will. Okay.
Item number eight, Brown Hill Realty LLC, which requested a subdivision on Brown Hill Lane,
has been tabled after requesting the applicant. So if anybody is here for that particular issue, then I will save you the time and energy. So it has been tabled. All right, proceeding. Item number four, Martin's Point Healthcare Request Sketch Plan Review for 153 U.S. Route 1, assesses map U-47 Lot 92.
Sure, as you just read, the applicant is before the board for redevelopment of property at 153 U.S. Route 1. This is the site where the Scarborough Commons was formerly located, which probably about a year or a year and a half ago burnt down, has recently been completely demolished. The property is located within the TVC district, and as just noted, the applicant is before you for a sketch plan review. This provides an opportunity for the applicant to ask questions about expectations of the board, and for the board to provide guidance on any elements of the plan that they see fit. With that, staff has provided some comments for the board and applicant to consider in terms of design standards and streetscaping, as well as parking, field design and layout. So with that, Mr. Chair, I turn it back to you.
Thank you. I will open it up to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning board. My name is Kylie Mason. I'm from Spago Technics. I'm here representing Martin's Point. This evening, I have Jake Jacobson from Martin's Point here, if you'd like to ask any questions of the applicant themselves. But I'd like to just give you a brief overview, and I'm going to grab the mic and hope all my paper doesn't fall. Let me see here. So, it's on the bottom.
Maybe if you just turn the other mic?
I'll just turn this way and try and lean into it. So just to orient everyone, this is Route 1 here. Lois's Naturals is in this location. This is Prime Mercedes, and as the aerial won't show, they recently had the expansion for the new auto lot there. And so what we're proposing is to essentially, the original building sat in this location, fronting the street, parking in front of it, with what was essentially kind of a dead-end parking lot on this side, and a dead-end parking lot over here, good circulation around the building on this side. And what we'd like to do is, because Martin's Point has a drop-off component to their healthcare facility, we do have a canopy, and it's very important that we provide this access for patients coming in. So what we're proposing is coming off the signalized entrance, allowing for either circulation into the parking lot itself, or to come through a one-way area. It's about 24 feet wide, I think it might be down to 22 feet wide. It meets the needs for the fire lane. We also extend that to the back for access. But what that does is it allows people to drop off a loved one at the canopy, escort them into the building, and then come around and park, and then come in themselves. So this orientation's very important, and allows key circulation into the facility. The other reason we would like to be in front of you and just ask for an impression, or what your feelings might be, is the original building and facility had parking within what is now a buffer area. We are right up against the threshold for parking for what we think we might need at this facility, especially with a community room aspect. Right now, the medical office building itself is about 15,000 square feet. There is a 3,000-square-foot community room that's part of this. To support that community room aspect, we do want to try and focus on as much parking as we can, and so we'd like to take advantage of some of the parking spaces at the front and keep those intact. We would obviously eliminate anything that was the dead-end parking lot, but this still allows for really good circulation, and we could do some really great buffering. The other piece is, in working with engineering and planning, they've identified that there might be potential for a future bus stop. So what we've done is we've located it in this area, we'll certainly work through it through the course of the next iteration, and get that where planning and engineering and the bus service would be looking for that. But we think it's a great addition to the project, and Martin's Point's very excited to have it on the site. A couple of things in terms of landscaping, sketch plans don't really allow for landscaping and buffering plans, so you'll forgive me for just the few smattering of trees. But what I did bring was a plant presentation to just give you an idea of the plants that we're planting within the certain buffer areas. I'll hand those out in just a moment. But I also wanted to just open this up to the planning board, get your comments, your thoughts, what you think might make it better, what your concerns are.
You all set?
I am.
Okay, thank you. All right, since this is a sketch plan, this is not open to the public, but it's really a matter of conversation with the applicant between the board and the applicant. And since you just mentioned landscaping?
Thank you.
Sue, I'll start with you.
(laughing) Nice to be known, if only for being the landscape lady. Okay, would you please tell me what is the actual purpose of this building? What's the usage of this building? What's it going to be used for?
It's a medical office building.
No, I'm sorry, up here.
I think it's a primary healthcare building.
So you will have physicians there, and patients will be coming in. There was some talk at the beginning that this might be part of the administration of Martin's Point, because that's what you were looking for over in South Portland, but that's not what this is. This is going to be a meeting with patients.
Excuse me, for the record, would you give us a name, please? Jake Jacobson, Martin's Point. It's basically a primary healthcare facility with patients and doctors, providers, support staff.
Can I walk in?
No, not at this point.
Okay, so you need to be a patient or a client of Martin's Point to come in here?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. In terms of the buffering, not the buffering, but the, sure, the use of the site, transit in and out of the site. I'm not against the way you've set this up, but I'm not sure it's the only way to set it up, and in terms of how it could face onto Route 1 as opposed to facing sideways, I think maybe at some point when you come back, it might be kind of good to do a sketch that just shows us the difference in what you end up with in terms of parking. And of course, when you come back, there's going to be lots of talk about landscaping and all that kind of nice stuff. Yes, for the bus stop, that's so very exciting. Great buffering, we're really looking forward to seeing what that means. In the meantime, I'm very excited about the fact that you're here. It's nice to have, I've always said, when you get one or two, you're going to get six or seven. So we seem to be on our way towards doing something about providing medical offices on Route 1, and that's good, and we're glad you're here.
We're very excited for this project.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Thank you. I guess I would agree with Sue to see the alternative, although I do like this arrangement. I think it looks nice. It's a little different, and so I don't really have a big problem with this, but it would be interesting to understand what your rationale, other than be able to drive through there, you know? I mean, I assume that you'd want to do that on Route 1 as well, and it's probably more confining, so that's what I suspect your problem is.
The volume of the building.
Yes, yeah, okay. I don't really have a big problem with the, you know, the 15-foot, where you want to keep the parking right there, because it's right there now, so it's not like you're taking something away. So I guess overall, I'm very pleased with the presentation so far.
Thanks. Nick?
I really don't have much for comments, other than I think it's, you know, welcome, and I think it's a good design so far. Echo my fellow planning board members here, and wanted to know the rationale, and you're saying it's the size of the building that couldn't allow you to orient it?
Yeah, it'll be really easy for me to bring a sketch, because it was one of the ones we explored early on. When we look at the building volume, so if the original building footprint was 24,000 square foot, or 22,000 square foot, 24,000 total, this building is 18,000 square foot, and as you can tell, it's much different than what was there. So this volume is generally the same as what was there, it was just a little more rectangular, it had no central core. And so when you take this and spin it, you can see that what ends up happening is you lose this. In fact, you lose this whole volume right here. And so what happens is you are almost forced to have a drop-off within the main travel lane, and so there was a stacking and drop-off just malfunctioned. It would be undesirable, it probably wouldn't be used for a drop-off, and it would seem awkward entering the site. And then, of course, you end up with a dead-end parking lot at the back there. So the idea of this is that, you know, using this area, you can really gain good flexibility and circulation, but turning this would certainly, I think they ended up with 70 spaces when we were all said and done, so a huge drop in volume of parking, but also you lose that circulation.
And just as a follow-up, did you consider having the building on the?
On the other side, we did.
Facing the other way.
We did.
And I say that because that means the rear of your building would be facing more of a wooded area, rather than a drive, you know, people driving past.
Yeah, we have explored, and in that scenario, what happens is when you mirror it this way, you have to bring everyone in all the way around to loop them back, and the same thing happens, you end up losing a great volume of parking to support that movement.
Thank you.
John?
All right, overall, currently it's going to be an improvement to the site. Couple of questions. Immediately, Route 1 on the side of the building, you're removing those parking spaces, that's in green, there's no parking there?
Yes.
Okay, so you're asking for the waiver, which would be south of that?
Correct, it's this area right here.
All right. Can we move those, is it possible, just reconfigure it a little bit, to move those parking spaces to the rear, those six, to the rear left-hand side of that?
This area right here. So we're actually exploring trying to get parking in there right now, if we can, it just gets us closer to what's more ideal for the site. They probably still wouldn't want to lose these unless you guys absolutely don't want them.
That little green space we're showing there, how big is that?
It's not big enough.
The green space on Route 1, sorry.
This area right here?
Correct.
So it's about, it's about seven spaces wide at nine, so about 56 feet long.
The green, excuse me, the greens?
Oh, the depth of area?
The gap for the space from Route 1 to the parking.
Probably about seven feet.
Okay, so we're just splitting it in half. All right. And just the other part of the design standards, the north side of that building needs to be, in my opinion, needs to be spruced up a little bit?
The building itself?
Yes.
Yes, I think you'll see as they?
That elevation, pretty bland, you know, if you can somehow spruce that up a little bit.
Yeah, I think as you'll see the next iteration of building, this is just a sketch-up model, so.
Right, absolutely.
You'll see some great stuff.
And that's all I've really got, just to?
Thank you.
Offer that design standard a little better, and I'm okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay, let me just, I know you've had conversations with staff, but let me just try and summarize some of the points that need to be stressed when you come before us More formal, of course, as far as the architecture is concerned, as far as form, detailing, roof lines, so forth and so on. And as John just said, the design standards call for the detailing of the rear of the facade to be similar or complement the design of the primary facade, and so please keep that in mind. You've discussed the orientation of the building. You, in a general way, talked about parking needs, but how does it work with the town's parking requirements? I mean, how many spaces, I know you don't know how many patients you're going to have at any given time, but as far as what your best guesstimate is, as far as staffing is concerned versus patients, how many spaces do you think you're going to need, and how does that meet the town's design?
So we're actually exploring, there's two other buildings just like this, one in Gorham, one in Bedford. So industry standard has you normally around six per thousand square feet, and that puts us somewhere around 90 spaces. We use that same ratio at the other facilities, and we're currently tracking those parking needs to see what we can spare on the site, because certainly we don't want to build parking if we don't need to. The other part that's the unknown here is the community room. So that's really where we're focusing on kind of an overlap of parking. It's very easy to track patients and turnover rate as they see doctors. The part that's going to be hard to track is that community room use aspect for when there'll be patients in the building, but also community in the community room. So that would be, and actually to go back to Susan's question earlier, through Mr. Chair, the question was, what's the use of the building? And the one thing we left out was that there is a programmatic use for a community space, and that leaves this 3,000-square-foot area open to anyone to use within the community. So there is that piece that we're trying to track. So we're right around 90 is where we think we probably should be. This site right now, as it's in front of you, has 83 spaces.
Okay, and of course, we'll need more specifics as far as landscaping, and of course buffering, especially in the neighboring neighborhood. The bus stop, I know you're going to work with staff as far as location is concerned, and also as far as the whole lighting situation, fixtures and timing and so forth. And of course, the infamous stormwater infrastructure, we'll need to see some specifics about that.
Sure.
So, having said all that, I'm thrilled to see that fire material taken away, and look forward, I know that reputation is excellent, and the past structures that you've built have been well-received in the communities in which they exist. So we look forward to the next step in this, and welcome to Scott. Nick, you got a question?
You touched your thought, but I did have one more thing to?
Go ahead.
As we were talking, so you have seven-foot buffer on the front of Route 1 there?
Yeah, roughly.
So if you took another seven feet, put it that way, it gets you closer to the 15-foot buffer, which means in fact that middle stretch in the first one near the canopy, you would essentially lose one set of parking spots, is that correct? To get the seven feet, if you just crammed everything down seven feet, pushed it, you would actually lose in those two center?
I would lose a little bit more than that, yeah, if I pulled all of this seven feet in.
So what I'm talking about is if you wanted to move that seven feet this way, you would lose these two spots and that spot, right? Because everything would get pushed? And what I'm saying is, could you have the three there?
No, so, right, so if I, because it's actually, I'm glad you asked, because it's one of the scenarios we looked at. So what's driving this here is the signalized entrance is really kind of the, that's the fulcrum point, right? That's the point we can't move, it's everything we have to operate around. So what's actually driving a lot of this is that turning radius to get people in and allow them to make a graceful turn without having to take a hard turn. So what's key here is this radius point, really, it's kind of setting everything. So if I pull this up too much, you're kind of mid-turn before you need to straighten out again if you're going right into the parking lot. So that was what drove this. So if I come up and this turns in?
Everything, so I see.
Right, it makes?
You squish more than what the seven feet is?
Right.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Okay, I was just?
No, it's a great point, because that's one of the things we explored, so thank you.
One last thing, is it okay with the fire department, the configuration, have you gone to them yet?
Yes, we have sat down with them, they actually, they were very helpful. It was actually the reason we extended that kind of straightaway fire lane, just to make sure that they had as much access as we could grant them.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Yeah.
No, go ahead.
Two quick questions.
Sure.
How many employees are you going to have here? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, probably, we're planning on eight providers, and each provider has around two and a half support staff. So we're talking between 30, 40 people.
Okay, and our last one is, I'm kind of curious about the bus stop, was that your initiative, or?
No, that's the town of Scarborough.
Oh, town, okay.
But I think it's a great idea, we support it full-heartedly.
Okay. Sue?
Yeah, I tried not to talk about landscaping, but here I am.
(laughing) That's fine.
Because of the amount of, minimum amount of setback that's going to be in that corner, landscaping, no surprise, is going to be really important. And I know enough about landscaping to know that it can be done in a way that is not going to make the site of the, to help me?
Sure, the sightlines at the intersection?
It's not going to interfere with that, but will actually help to buffer the cars that are going to be now facing into Route 1.
Sure, though, you mean the ones that were existing?
Yeah, the thing is, nothing much really happened there, there was, there is a berm, which if you could keep a berm would be absolutely wonderful.
Right.
And then some actual low planting on top of that berm would make it absolutely terrific in terms of buffering in a very narrow space.
Absolutely.
And because you have that open space for coming in, it's an opportunity to be really?
Absolutely. If you look in the, I know you haven't had time, but I thought it was very important, and I knew it would be important. I actually live in Scarborough myself, so I'm looking at this with the same community eyes. But I do want to make sure, the plants are not the ones that will be absolute, but we're focusing on a lot of narrow canopy in the area so that we're not, we don't have canopy over trees, but we also have power lines.
Yes, I know.
So I would like them to be narrow enough that we can pull them in, and I should probably also introduce, I myself am a landscape architect, so I'm very sensitive to the plants.
Let me make a statement about that.
Sure.
I think that it's very important to notice that there's a lot that you can do with the minimum amount of space, and people who come in front of us do not regularly acknowledge that. They say, "We don't have much space, so we're not going to have to do much landscaping." I think if you have very little space, you need to do more landscaping, more creatively, and the fact that you're a landscape architect makes me feel really good about this, thank you.
Sure.
Kylie will attest to my passion for landscape as well, I'm pushing to have a healing garden in this section.
Go, go, healing garden.
Healing garden, right here, and she, in all her other drawings, it says Jake's Park right there, but I want it to be a healing garden, and I'm sticking her to that.
Thank you, thank you, I'm all set.
Ron, one more.
Go ahead.
One more quick question, the community room, where does that come from? Is that a town initiative, or is that something you fear you should do?
I think it's a cooperative, so all of the facilities have had a small community room aspect, but it's used mainly by the facility, but also the Gorham one is a great example, it's open to the community to use or sign out to use that space. And this model has a bigger component, I believe, because there's a senior program that provides lunch every?
Twice.
Twice a week?
Once to twice.
Once to twice a week. And so this was an idea that was brought to, I think, that kind of dovetails with what Martin's Point wants to do, and it was brought through economic development and the town, that this might be a great opportunity within the community.
Where are we doing these lunches now?
Mr. Chair, my Karen Martin is here from Seco, who I believe has been integral in the collaboration that was talked about by?
By all means.
Currently, the lunches are being done out at Camp Ketchum, and this is just, this community room idea was just a wonderful way to work cooperatively with Martin's Point and meet a town need that we really have, both in terms of senior, potential senior center type of activity, but also, you know, we're so tight on meeting space here for all sorts of reasons, and Martin's Point has been very generous in talking about what a community center could be, I shouldn't say community center, it's their community rooms, but making them really useful for the community to do all sorts of types of activities. So it's been a great, great working relationship talking with them about this.
Let me just jump in on that follow-up with John, and say that it just, I sit on a couple of committees other than this, we're trying to make some sort of town center. Now, that doesn't meet the criteria, I don't mean to go that far, but the fact that it's on Route 1, and it's a medical facility, and they're willing to offer this to the community, I think it's just one step further, and it's on Route 1, and it takes some of the pressure off of the transportation, however little that may be, on the Blackpoint Road also. So I think it serves the accommodations, without blowing it out of proportion to its reality. Do you have enough of us?
I do, if I might ask about the next submission, we're hoping to bring this in for November 20th, for the December 7th meeting, and we're hopeful, Mr. Chair, that at that meeting, we could have the public hearing and hopefully receive, you know, hoping all things are great and you love the project, that we could receive a final approval to take advantage of the winter bidding market.
We have our submission deadline, if you meet that, we'll certainly, I know the board will?
It's up to you.
Yep.
It's in your hands more than ours.
But certainly it's possible to get?
Certainly in your ballpark now.
Back to us by that November, what'd you say, 20th deadline, and she'll be on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm not so much worried about the agenda, I'm more worried? I'm more worried, there was a question about the architectural piece, so if there were concerns, I think there was, maybe somebody brought up the flat roof. Is that a concern from the design guidelines?
That could be.
You want to get into architecture?
Go ahead, Sue.
You really would like us to get into architecture?
If it's going to impact the next opportunity, then certainly I want any comment that I can take back.
Why don't you put it up for me? This is my problem. Here I am climbing on my soapbox again. This is a problem. This view does not even begin to give me a really accurate representation of the site. It looks a whole lot bigger than it really is.
Right, it's a flat drawing.
I know, I know. But I'm just saying, as it is drawn there, this place, this, this building is huge. You see what I'm saying?
Right, but it's much smaller than what was there.
I know.
Right.
So, you see my problem? I'm not saying I don't like it. I'm saying that's one honkin' big barn. Now, if you want to show us a barn, do something because that's what you do. You get paid the big bucks for figuring out how to show me how that is actually going to look proportionally to the space that's going to be available. Because I really don't like that a whole lot.
Right.
But it's because it is way out of proportion to what's going on on Route 1 near it. So, do something about presenting it in such a way that I can see how it integrates into the rest of the community and maybe I won't feel quite so negative about it.
I'm going to follow up on Sue.
Sure.
We have a philosophy, I'll call it, about HVAC units, which I don't see when we're talking about the architecture and that, and their visibility. So, that should very much be taken into consideration as far as where, how, and how it's going to be some sort of locked or hidden as much as possible, so...
Right. I can tell you they will be blocked and hidden, so. And from a size and scale, short of having a perspective, I mean, we will have the elevations. It'll still be a sketch-up model. From a scale perspective, I don't know if I can do much from modeling each side of the street, but perhaps with the landscapes surrounding it.
Go ahead.
I, I think it's kind of unfair to take a look at that. I mean, that's looking at it from a drone, okay? And it, it looks larger than it's probably going to be. And I think if we had a better representation of what you're really planning for that, that space, I think it would be, would be better. I understand you want to try and move this forward, you know, but...
Yep.
I think it's out of proportion, the way it looks, just from the point of view of that.
Sure, yeah. Sketchup's not exactly the greatest tool at skill, but we do have SMRT. We'll be doing the architecture, mechanical engineering and structural engineering, and we all know they have a great reputation for some pretty beautiful buildings. So, we will bring back elevations and I'll see what we can do to get a perspective that embraces the entire streetscape.
Let me ask the $64,000 question. When do you expect to begin construction based on final approval?
As soon as the ground thaws.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Wait a minute.
Oh, sorry.
We didn't answer the question on the flat roof. Everybody opposed, anybody opposed to this flat roof on the section that's closest to Route 1? If you're looking for quick approval, we need to get some of these out.
I appreciate that, sir. Thank you.
That's why I'm asking that question. I don't personally have a problem with it. It breaks the building up a little bit. I know we have the design standards, but it breaks it up and adds a little modern look to the building. So, I don't have a personal issue with it, but I guess we need the, are the board members...
Sure.
Go ahead.
I don't like flat roofs, period. I'm not sure how this is going to look because the perspective isn't correct, which is part of my problem. I mean, that's why I asked for it, because I can't look at that and see what the real impact of that flat part of the roof is going to be.
Sure.
I agree with you, by the way, Sue. It's out of, it's out of...
I'm not saying that I'm for it or against it. I'm just saying right now, theoretically, I'm not, but that could look fine, depending on what it really looks like to me.
Sure.
And this is one of those things where you can't take, you can't take a sidewalk. You've got to leave it up to the architect to show it in a way that actually shows us what's going on.
Sure.
Go ahead.
I, I hate to keep disagreeing with you.
No, go for it.
I actually, I actually think, I like the different shapes, myself. I think it adds a lot of character instead of just having a, you know, the monotonous, you know...
I may too.
Yeah. So, again, I go back to, I think, once you present us with a more...
Sure.
...firmed-up, you know, presentation on that, it'll look better. But I, I would tend to agree with John on that.
I think you get the flavor.
I do.
I mean, I think there's general consensus that we like mainly what we see, we just need to see a little more upscale.
Sure.
So, okay, thank you.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things we're going for is that community space kind of stands out. It's really not confused with the healthcare facility itself, that it is a standalone function, functioning facility.
So, is that the flat roof? Is that where the community room's going to be?
Right.
Oh, okay. And that's going to be the Karen Martin room? Is that what that's going to be?
Whatever you want to call it.
Good one.
Whatever helps.
Okay. Good one.
Thanks. Frank Marston requests site plan amendment review for 55 Spring Street, assesses map R37 lot 26. Jay, you want to...
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's see, board members may recall this item. We began reviewing this, I think, back in the late spring or early summer. It's for a parking lot expansion and modifications at 55 Spring Street. The board had principally gone through all the review and were generally comfortable with the proposal, but for the applicant needed to work through final details of a lease agreement with DOT. Staff's understanding that that has been completed and the land has actually now been transferred to the applicant, so they're now the owner. With that, I know, based on our last discussion, the board had asked for a little more detail on landscaping along Spring Street, which has been provided. And with that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I will turn it over to the applicant.
Hi, Steve Blaze here with Blaze Civil Engineers, now located in Scarborough.
Yay.
Yeah, yeah. Here with Frank Marston tonight, the owner of the property. We did talk about this a while back. It was in the April meeting when we last spoke about it. So, it did take us a little while to get on the same page with the DOT, but that is a done deal. So, here we are. I believe the last outstanding item last time we spoke, and I can go through the process of the, what we went over earlier, if anyone wants some, to refresh our memory. But the one thing that was left was the landscaping. One comment that Susan made was, "Give me a bigger plan. I want to see it." So...
You ready? Ta-da! Hold on a second.
So, there's the bigger landscape plan with added plants. So, we did add plants to this, sorry about that, this bed here along Spring Street. We also added some plants here. We, I believe these are ornamental grasses here to provide a little buffer there. We added, we replaced the daylilies in here with ornamental grasses also. And that's pretty much all we've changed since we spoke with you last.
Does anybody on the board, I mean, we went through this pretty thoroughly, other than the landscaping...
I just want to say...
And waiting for the DOT to transfer the land.
I just think they deserve some sort of credit for not giving up. I mean, really.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Frank definitely does.
Unbelievable, isn't it?
Move it forward.
Okay.
I have no problems with this.
In that case, I have a draft motion. Move to approve the application of Frank Marston as represented by Blaze Civil Engineers for the reconfiguration expansion of the parking field at 55 Spring Street. The board has considered the proposed site improvements and found the proposal meets the standards of the site plan review ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Go on.
All right.
Congratulations.
Okay, Jay has just whispered in my ear, in case anybody has come in late, the Brown Hill Realty LLC request has been tabled. So, if anybody is here for that agenda item, it has been tabled. Moving forward. Item number six. The Sparrow Brothers Construction Company requests amended subdivision review for a lot line adjustment for the Thurgood subdivision, assesses map R40 lot number one. Jay?
Sure. As board members will recall, this is a recently approved subdivision amendment, which the applicant added seven lots at the end of Memory Lane. In conferring with the applicant's engineer, it was found that there was a surveying error that needs to be corrected. And so, it really has a nominal impact on the overall development, has no impact on the overall development, a nominal change to the lot line depiction where the land, board members may recall, there was some land that was to be conveyed to the main turnpike authority. And so, that's really what this amendment is about correcting. And I'm sure the applicant can show us exactly where that square footage is. So, with that, Mr. Chair, I turn it back to you.
And I will turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. My name's Nancy St. Clair. I'm with St. Clair Associates. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Sparrow Brothers. And as you recall, as Jay mentioned, this plan was recently approved, approved last month for a subdivision off of the end of Memory Lane. If you recall from that discussion, we talked to you folks about a portion of the land actually being conveyed to the main turnpike authority. And those coordination efforts are ongoing. The turnpike authority is moving forward with the acquisition of that property. But as part of that coordination effort, it was discovered that back in 1996, there was a deed that was conveyed to the turnpike authority. The plan that was approved in 2002 referenced that deed and correctly showed the line according to the limits on the extent of the turnpike. However, in that deed, there were two parts to that, and there was a small sliver that actually runs sort of parallel to, to Rod Road, which was in that deed as well. That was not reflected in the 2002 perimeter survey that was done as part of the original subdivision. So, when we came in and did the modifications, it was not caught until we had that coordination effort with the turnpike authority and they identified that their deed had actually two parts. So, what we're talking about is a very small sliver. It's about seven feet wide at its widest point, which is right there, and runs basically parallel along to Rod Road and that little sliver that you see on the bottom of the plan. So, the majority of the area is, that is, that's impacted by that is actually land that we were conveying to the turnpike authority. So, the land that was to go to the turnpike authority got smaller because they already had it, but it does affect a small sliver of Lot 8, which, this is Lot 8, this big lot right here. So, right on that tip, right there, there's about 499 square feet of land area that should not have been in that lot. It was actually acquired by the turnpike back in 1996. So, as part of that, we're here tonight to correct that line, to make it reflect that deed that conveyed back almost 20 years ago, and correct the lot area for Lot 8. It does not affect the building window. You can see that, that's up here. That lot is well over the minimum lot size, so it doesn't have any effect. We're not changing anything else as far as the design of the project goes, but we wanted to correct that so the record appropriately reflected those deeds. So, we're here.
Okay, before I open it up to the board, since this is actually something new, there is opportunity for public discussion. So, if anybody is here to discuss this subdivision, specifically what we've heard tonight, please come up to the podium, give us your name, and try and keep your remarks down to five minutes or less.
Hello, my name is Melissa Chen. I actually live in the Bonnie Grove subdivision. That's right next to where Memory Lane is being extended down. My house is right there. So, I just actually came in, I wasn't sure, I'm not familiar with any of this stuff. I wasn't sure exactly what was going to be changed about it, anything like that. I did have a question. I just wasn't sure when the trees, I know that there are pine trees that are going to be put in, right up along the turnpike, when the plans were to move those pine trees over there, just to help out with the noise and seeing the turnpike. I mean, it is a big adjustment for us as well, seeing everything. But that's really all my concern is. After seeing this, it's nothing, nothing major, but I just had a question, bringing that back to everybody in my, my neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, to answer Melissa's question, I don't have the exact date. What I can do is get her contact information afterwards and have the applicant reach out to her directly with the, the schedule as to that work.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Okay. Now, I'll open it up to the board.
Pretty cut and dry for me.
Down this end?
All set.
Having heard all that, I have a draft motion. I move to approve the application of the Sparrow Brothers Construction Company, Inc., as represented by St. Clair Associates, for the third amended subdivision plan of the Thurgood subdivision. The planned amendment corrects the location of a lot line between the subdivision parcel and the lands to be conveyed to the main turnpike authority as described in October 5th, 2015 supporting letter and depicted on the plan titled, "Third amended subdivision plan of the Thurgood," recording plot dated 9/29/15.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Verizon Wireless requests site plan review for a transmission tower at 239 Broad Turn Road, assesses map R24 lot 6. Jay, you want to use this up to us?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. As just noted, the applicant before you is Verizon Wireless. They are seeking to establish a new transmission tower on Broad Turn Road. This is in our transmission tower overlay district zone. And just to remind the board, this application's been before you three previous times throughout the summer. And during those discussions, the board has really been through many of the review criteria, principally in starting with the priority of location standards that you go through in reviewing the transmission towers. And subsequent to that sort of approval, if you will, the board has begun review of the performance standards in the TTOD, the transmission tower overlay district, as well as the site plan review criteria. Principally, there are really two remaining items, and one of them I frankly think the board has largely dealt with, had to do with height. The applicant is proposing 120 feet of height. And I do recall at the last meeting, the board seemed generally comfortable with that height. Just as a reminder, the standard is 130 feet, but the board does have the ability to allow for a reduction or an increase, depending on the board's determination. It does, as I mentioned, it did appear that the board was comfortable with the 120-foot height. The last item that really seemed to remain open for discussion was around buffering. I know we had, there was some confusion around that issue last time, and staff has reached out to the town attorney to help provide some guidance in terms of the board's review. Essentially, and as we often talk about, the board's job at this time is to review the proposal that the applicant has provided, the evidence that they provided in terms of buffering. And if you find that adequate, then it would appear this item is ready for approval. We've drafted a motion to that effect. If there's additional work that the board thinks needs to be done to meet that standard, then that would be on the applicant to figure out, to meet that standard. And so, I really think that's what, at this point, what it boils down to. And of course, board members may have other items they wish to bring up, but based on the three prior discussions, that seemed to be where we were at, at this point. So, with that, Mr. Chair, I turn it back to you.
Okay, and I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Yes, thanks, everyone. I think on the, on the last buffering piece, what we had submitted in the most
Can you name, please?
Oh, yes, sorry. Scott Anderson and Chip Fredette here this evening for Verizon Wireless. As a follow-up to the last planning board meeting and kind of along the lines of the buffering, we had submitted an additional plan that noted a line of evergreens that would be planted outside of the fenced area of the impoundment, and also a notation on the plan that there would not be any clearing of any existing vegetation outside of the fenced area where the tower and the other improvements will be located without prior approval of the planning board as a way to address and do the best we could at providing some buffering towards the base of the tower. As you know, the board had gone through a pretty thorough consideration of the mono pole versus mono pine design and how that would affect the visual impacts. We, the most recent plan we provided showed the mono pine design, which we understand has been elected by the board. And we think here that there's kind of three components of visual mitigation that are part of this project. One, we proposed 120 instead of 130 feet because 120 works for our coverage needs. And by reducing the size of the tower, that is the first piece that minimizes visual impacts. Second, the mono pine design, as you saw in the photo simulations that compared both the pole versus the mono pine, especially at this lower height, does provide, we think, some significant visual buffering and, which is beneficial and minimizes the visual impacts. And then the third piece of it is the notations that we've got on the plan and the addition of some additional plantings on the north-hand side of the fenced area to do what we can more towards the base of the tower to make sure that no matter what happens elsewhere on the site, there will be within this 100-by-100-foot leased area maintained vegetation and some additional vegetation placed along the fence line. So our hope is that with those kind of three components, we will have both met the coverage objectives, kept the tower as low as possible, done the best job of kind of hiding it, and minimize other visual impacts to the greatest extent that we can. And we're here to answer questions or hear your comments as to kind of where things stand and how you're feeling about the project. So fire away.
Before I turn it over to the board, for the record, we received another letter from a resident, a Mr. Emmero, who lives at 11 Carter Brook Drive in Scarborough. He just reiterated his concerns about the project. I'm not going to read the whole letter because we've already discussed that in the past, but I do want, for the record, to note that he has once again expressed his concerns. Having said that, I'll now open it to the board. And John, since you've been most interested in this, I'll start with you.
Thank you. Actually, at this point, I'm okay. I had a question on buffering. I had some questions, technical questions, that town attorney and staff has satisfied my questions. So I'm okay. Prior to that little doubt in my mind, I was ready to approve this project, but I just, the light came on and I wanted an answer.
Thank you. Nick?
All set.
What?
Just one question on the mono pine. I noticed that that's 40 feet before you actually see some of those fake branches.
Thank you.
Just a condition. The plantings that you're going to do, are those going to be somewhat close to that 40? What are you going to put in there?
Well, the existing vegetation is a little higher. The initial plantings we would do would probably be six to eight foot high. Over several years, they will grow. But there is some existing vegetation at the site that you can see, one of the photo simulations that provides some shielding at the very base of the tower. And as we've noted on the plan, there's no cutting of any of the vegetation in that area as part of the project.
Is it going to be basically pine?
It's a combination. It's largely pine trees, but there is some deciduous trees in that immediate vicinity.
I don't have any other problems.
Susan?
I don't have a problem with that. I was just wondering.
Thanks.
Susan?
I'm all set.
Okay. I just have one question. You were working with the DEP
Yes.
on whether it's a permit by rule. Have you gotten any answer to that?
We did. We were required to file a permit by rule, which we filed, and we've received the response from the DEP. So that permit is already in hand. But your question suggested to me that we have not yet provided that to Jay, or he would have reported that. So we will get that to you immediately.
Well done.
But that is in hand, so we've worked that out with the DEP.
So you can't pull anything over.
That's a second.
Okay. Having said that, I have a draft motion. I move to approve the application of Verizon Wireless under chapter 405 of the Town of Scarborough zoning ordinance and chapter 405B, the Town of Scarborough site plan review ordinance with the following findings and conditions. I'm not going to read all the findings, but I want the findings read into the record. Conditions. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall pay the peer review fees. That's number one. Number two, prior to the issuance of the building permit, a finalized surety shall be provided to the planning board to guarantee the removal of the tower should it become abandoned. This, planning, what did I say? Oh, I'm sorry, planning department. Thank you, Karen. To guarantee the removal of the tower should it be abandoned. This documentation must comply with the provisions of section 9 F21 of the zoning ordinance. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? You got the call.
Brady, thank you very much. And we appreciate that this was maybe the first new tower to come through, or one of the first through. And we really appreciate the time and attention of the town and, and working on your ordinance. And so it's been our honor to participate.
Didn't mind being put through all those
No, no, we relish those opportunities. So thanks again for all your time and hard work. We appreciate it.
That's what we want to hear.
So you're getting paid by the alley.
Yes, exactly. That is true. Thanks, everyone.
Shut his microphone off.
Yeah, that's right.
As noted, item number eight has been tabled. So that's all of the formal items that we have. I've broken my record again. So, item number nine, is there a town planners' report?
We don't have anything new to report on this meeting.
Okay. What about item 10, an administrative amendment report?
We did not have any administrative amendments since the last meeting.
I'm going to get out of here before 8 o'clock.
Number 11, correspondence. I will say that, again, to mention, for the record, the letter that we received from Mr. Emmero. Any other correspondence? Planning board comments?
I just have one. I appreciate the short readings. And unfortunately, if I'm going to be the chair next year, I won't be here to enjoy these short readings.
Boy, oh, boy. I do have one. We do have a transportation meeting tomorrow night. And we will, I unfortunately missed the last meeting, but I know that on the agenda, we're going to be also starting to talk about the Gorham Road, which is a mess. And so there's a lot of work and there's going to be a lot of time put into it. Other than that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.